I am ready. Okay, good evening. I am going to reopen the Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 14th, 2021. We started tonight's meeting in executive session at 6:15, closed it at 6:32, and now we are reopening at 6:38. The executive session was related to federal court and Superior Court and litigation strategy with respect to litigation on all fronts with the Ember and the Port Restaurant and Bar against the town of Harwich. It was decided that discussing the matter in open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position, and the chair so declares. So, tonight's conversation was an update from our attorneys on where we are. With that, I would ask that you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to public comment and announcement. Actually, before we get to that, we, tonight's meeting is primarily dedicated to the comprehensive wastewater management plan, sewer CAD modeling, initial pump station site review, and an extension with the Chatham intermunicipal agreement. I did add a few things on the agenda tonight at the beginning, more just normal business consent agenda items, just to lighten tomorrow night's agenda. The board will meet tomorrow night?
We're getting word that the audio is not working.
Okay.
It's a moot point.
So, Caleb?
Mary, just so you know, those comments you have to ignore because you don't want to encourage them.
What's up?
Those comments that Don made, you want to ignore because you don't want to encourage them.
The moot point stuff?
Ah, ah.
I can go through that afterwards.
Because then you always hear people mash mute, mute into one thing.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're back on with the audio.
Okay. Caleb, we're good?
Sounds like we're good.
All right. And if we had nothing from the beginning?
So Caleb, I'll help you with muting some of the open lines.
Great.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I do have two quick announcements under public announcements, if that's okay.
Should I go back over while we're in executive session?
Sorry. Yes, certainly.
So, good evening. I am reopening the Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 14th, 2021. We started tonight's executive session in, started tonight in executive session at 6:15, where we adjourned executive session at 6:32, and we are reopening tonight's meeting at 6:41 PM. The reason for executive session was to discuss litigation strategy in respect to federal court, Superior Court, and all litigation strategy with respect to the lawsuits filed against the town and several members of the board and administrative staff by Ember and Port Restaurant. So, we did this because an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and the chair so declared. So, with that, we did the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there any appetite for doing the Pledge of Allegiance again? I think everyone probably saw us standing and do it.
I believe the audio kicked out after that.
Okay. With that, we'll go to public comment and announcement, and I will turn to Joe Powers first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and members of the board. The announcements first is just a notice to the general public. As you all may have read recently, there was a confirmed case of a rabid animal on Cape Cod. It's my understanding, the first such case in 15 years. Based on that, the USDA is on Cape and is conducting live trapping throughout the Cape. So, they're conducting live trapping on conservation land in the town of Harwich. So, just want to make residents aware and pet owners aware that the USDA is working with the town of Harwich through our Conservation Commission and various locations throughout town, being the Teshera Conservation Area, Bell's Neck Conservation Area, Sand Pond Woodlands, and the Isabel Smith Monomoy River Woodlands. They are going to be live trapping, and again, this is related to rabid animals, today through July 2nd. So, again, just want to make the public aware of that, to just be advised if they're in those conservation areas to be alert to that situation. Excuse me. Secondly, Mr. Chairman?
Just a question, Joe. Just for reference to the public, if they see an animal that's suspicious, they call whom? Do they call the police animal?
They should always contact the police department first with the animal control officer, and then word can go from there. We are told that the traps are cages that will not harm animals, so that should be some relief if an unfortunate trapping occurs. Mr. Chairman, the next item is that we received word late this afternoon through our attorneys, our counsel, KP Law, that efforts to expand upon the remote meetings such as this, excuse me, were, did not bear any fruit, and therefore, as you know, and I think you said before the audio kicked out, Mr. Chairman, that there is a, the regular board meeting Tuesday, June 15th, will be here in the Griffin Room. We will have to update the meeting notice to reflect the fact that while this may be on go-to meeting, as a courtesy to the general public, it is in fact a public meeting that will be held openly, and the public is allowed to attend. And again, that corresponds with town buildings reopening tomorrow, June 15th, as well. So, late-breaking news on that. So, it looks like for the foreseeable future, unless there's late-breaking legislation, that we're looking to resume meetings as we knew them prior to March 12th, 2020.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Before we go on to any other public comment and announcement, Caleb, my green light is not on on my mic.
Green light is on.
And we did, I did get a text that somebody is having a hard time hearing us.
All right, that should be rectified at this point.
Nope.
The water got him too actively.
Okay.
He said that it's all good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I want to say that I was at the landfill today, and I know that starting tomorrow, we now have to separate our material again, so.
Has anyone signed up to speak for public comment and announcement, and if not, does anyone want to speak public comment and announcement? Hearing, no?
We're not aware of anybody requesting.
Okay. Hearing, now we're going to go to the consent agenda. Mary, would you like to read the consent agenda?
I move that we have a discussion and possible vote to approve the committee appointments recommended by the interview committee. There's five appointments for the bylaw charter review committee. They're all full positions. First is Ray Gottwald, term expiring 6/30/2023. Second is Carol Thayer, term expiring 6/30/2024. Third is Deborah Cementa, term expiring 6/30/2023. Fourth is Sandra Hall, term expiring 6/30/2024. And fifth is Anita Dusset, term expiring 6/30/2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. Before I go to other board members, I just want to, I want to say, I sat in on these interviews with Don Howell, and it was something that we had worked on prior as an interview committee because we had interviewed other members. It was a great set of interviews. We had a lot of people interested. We had to make, in the end, we ultimately had to make a decision, I believe, out of eight applicants. The weighing factor for me was Carol Thayer, Deborah Cementa, Sandra Hall, and Anita Dusset were all on the committee prior to some trouble that they had with the past town administrator and a roadblock. So, they kind of abruptly resigned as a group, and in those interviews, there was discussion about why they designed, why they resigned as a group, and I think that there had been previous discussion of that. They had a will to continue. They were a very strong working group, and I believe Mr. Powers sat on that group a while back. But they were a very strong working group. They showed the want to go back with new administration and a new board. They felt like there was roadblocks, and all the work that they were doing was not going forward because the administrator wouldn't bring it forward. So, it was a tough decision not to just repopulate that with new bodies, but I took to heart the fact that we had a committee that worked really hard and was doing great work, and that decided that they could no longer do that work because of roadblocks. So, that was my position and my vote on those four. And then, based on, based on the interviews, again, we had strong candidates. We thought Ray Gottwald was the best candidate to move forward to the, for the full board.
Yeah.
So, with that, I will open it up to, actually, I will start with Don as he was the other interview committee person, to see if he has any comments, and then Larry, I will go to you.
No, I'm, I'm not sure that you made it clear, but they were in the middle of things still, that they had not completed when it all happened. In addition, the Ray part of this, I mean, I've known Ray for about 25 years. I actually knew Dana for just about that period of time, too. Ray's had a lot of experience up in the state. If there's anybody geekier about government than I am, I think Ray is. So, I mean, it looked like a good team overall, because I was really just hoping to fill that one extra slot with the people who had already been doing work.
Larry?
Thank you, Michael, and thanks for the explanation, because when I first looked at this, and I think I mentioned it to you, Don, I felt it might be lacking a bit in some new faces, even though this was a good acting committee. And so, I did initially question, and I thank you for the explanation. With that, I would like to remind everyone that, and we need to remind them all the time, that these meetings are open, and certainly everyone is invited and encouraged to sit in. These bylaws are important to us, and expand this discussion as broadly as we can.
Mary?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. You know, and last, it was at least, we did have other strong candidates, and we did mention, and this is not the appropriate time for it, but we did mention maybe adding alternates, but that will be a conversation for a later date. With that and no other discussion, I will take a roll call vote. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Moving on to new business announcement, annual meeting with liquor, licensed liquor establishments will be held Friday, June 25th, 2021, at 10:00 AM at the Harwich Police Department. And I will turn that over to Joe for an explanation of what this is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. It's my understanding, every year prior to, with the exception, of course, of the 2020, based on pandemic, but years prior, the police department worked with administration and other town staff related to licensing of, excuse me, the liquor establishments and their licensing, to just do an annual review. So, that event, as you've indicated, will occur Friday, June 25th, a little bit later than we wanted. But again, given everything that's been going on with pandemic and trying to adjudicate certain hearings, you know, it's, I think it'll be well-received. So, Chief Gilmet and I have met several times. Chief Gilmet will obviously be there. I'll be there, several other staff members, and really, it's just to remind the establishments, the town's expectations of them, where they were granted the benefit of liquor licenses. And so, we'll hopefully get that message out broadly, and we'll hopefully have receptive ears when we give those messages.
Thank you. Don, any comments on this?
No, I mean, I think everybody knows my feelings on it. I'd love to be able to make sure that everybody's playing by the same rulebook, and if somebody isn't, regardless of who that might be, it might be just somebody who just got a license, that there needs to be front-end enforcement so that everybody winds up understanding that we really mean it when we put conditions on them.
Mary?
And I trust that anyone who chooses not to attend the meeting does so at their own peril of not knowing the rules.
Yes. Larry?
Following Mary's comment, will this be Channel 18, will video this so they can, someone can, they can watch it after the fact?
Typically, we don't do that because it's licensees, we go over the regulations, and I would, I would urge that it not be publicized in that manner. The purpose, I think, for tonight's announcement is to give comfort to the public that we're resuming it after a year's hiatus to do that. It's meant to be an administrative business meeting.
Thank you. Chief, do you, do you have anything?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Number one, as Joe noted, these meetings have been ongoing. And am I coming through clear enough? I'm getting some feedback.
Now you are, Chief, yes.
Okay. So, we've been doing these meetings proactively for about four or five years. They're usually well-attended, and it includes also the package store people who I usually always feel sorry for because we end up talking mostly to the pouring establishments because that's where we have the most, the most history of issues. We have representation from across the town departments, such as fire, health, building, and we also invite, we also invite a representative from the ABCC, who's usually available to answer questions that the licensees might have. We have an agenda that is handed out. People are asked to sign into the meeting so we know they were there. We hand out a copy of the liquor regulations, and we discuss any and all questions out of those. I usually have some highlighted areas from previous years' issues that have surfaced that we have noticed at the police department, and we discuss that. We discuss the complaint process and how that works, and we take any questions at all. And we do, the whole intent of the meeting is exactly as you said, which is to put people on notice that they are held responsible for following these liquor regulations and state statute, and what would happen if they don't. So, it's usually well-received, and there's usually, you know, a few questions here and there, and we do our very best to explain our role in it as a law enforcement agency. And this year, Mr. Powers is going to be speaking to them as representative of the administration, so we're looking forward to getting the information out there.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, just to, just to mention again, it's June 25th, 2021, at 10:00 AM at the Harwich Police Department. Is there any intention from board members to go?
Well, I was going to ask if we posted, because I may, I got my calendar.
I intended to go.
I'm going to try to get to it.
Is that okay, Joe? I mean, if we don't have more than three, it's not a quorum, and we don't have to post it. So, that's why I ask. So, Larry and Mary have both said that they are going to attend.
I would just, I would just urge the members, you're the local licensing authority. You have a different role than anybody else at that meeting, and so, this is an opportunity for the regulators, so to speak. So, me as your hearing officer, Chief on behalf of public safety, Chief LeBlanc on behalf of fire, and probably Inspector Young as well, to talk about the administrative part of it. I am concerned about introducing local licensing authority members in that venue. Certainly, I defer to the board, but I would suggest that it, it could become problematic.
Okay.
That's not to say that we couldn't do some other venue, though.
That's fine.
Because I think this is a different year.
I was just trying to get an education. That's fine, Joe.
Excellent. Next on the agenda is the Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting to discuss noise on Monday, June 28th, 2021, at 6:30. So, that is a regular scheduled board meeting. What I am bringing, what noise means, is I am bringing forward the report from the Noise Containment Committee. They did a final report with some suggestions. I will, as mentioned, I believe it was two or three weeks ago, that several of the neighbors down there had hired their own attorney that did an interpretation of our noise bylaw. That will be in the packet. But I, my intention is to open it up, anything and everything related to noise and the Noise Containment Committee, but broaden it into the noise bylaw. We will, we will do a, I'm going to block off a long period of time for this conversation. We've had this, we've had an ask for this to be brought forward for quite some time now. I know in, for a long period of time, we held it due to the lawsuits and what was going on and hearings that were scheduled. But it's time to bring it forward, and it's time for the board to take some of those recommendations and then make actions based on those recommendations. The agenda item will be cleared, and suggestions to me as chair, prior to the meeting, if you would like, are fine. Not broad, not to each board member, no blind copying, no CCing, but to me, and I can make a checklist. We will, we will leave it open, that if we want to take an action that night on something, we can, but we're not obligated to. But if we do not take action that night, in the very near future, we will take action and put this topic to bed. So, any questions, please ask, and any information you want to send me, and I do plan on getting as much into the packet as I can from previous discussions on this. Any questions?
No.
Joe, anything to add?
Nope.
All right. Next, we'll jump into discussion on the comprehensive wastewater management plan, item C, and I will turn that over to Joe Powers for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By way of introduction, if I may, I'd like to make reference to the three items that you have, the first of which is the one you mentioned, the comprehensive wastewater management plan, and then the star of the event, so to speak, next would be the CWMP sewer CAD model. This is the pump station review that Russ Kleikamp had asked this board to meet on several weeks ago. And then, last, is a discussion and possible vote on extension of the Harwich-Chatham intermunicipal agreement on the sewer payment. And so, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have some additional items from your packet. You should have to your, to your side, a draft of the IMA request letter for item E that we can get into later. That draft was written by our wastewater superintendent, and I would be asking that I be authorized to send that if the board approves it or makes changes. Then you have, I just put it away, but bear with me, a single page. So, this is going to be a handy reference this evening for you. It is the pump station sites. So, it's going to list all of the plan numbers on the left-hand column, and then identify the proposed locations. Currently, some of these locations may change this evening as a result. And then, I don't know about you folks, but my eyes are better treated by the board also has the same maps as 11 by 17. And so, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully turn it over to our wastewater superintendent, Dan Pelletier, town engineer, Griffin Rider, and GHD executive, Russ Kleikamp, to begin the discussion generally on CWMP, and then get into the sewer model, excuse me, the pump station and sewer model discussion.
Good evening. So, the CWMP discussion tonight, you know, is really just a couple of more brief updates to bring the board up to speed as to what we've done over the last month or so since we last met. So, we were able to get a meeting with MEPA as well as DEP to discuss potential paths forward. So, currently, we're discussing two options, which I think you've heard us refer to, the notice of project change, and we're also discussing a second project. I see Mark just jumped on. Mark's a little bit more well-versed. If I could hand it over to you to give the background there?
Sure. Yeah, the second option is something called a special review procedure. And this, there's, there's two alternative paths, and we're just in discussion with MEPA about what's the best path forward for the town. So, we have one, at least one more discussion meetings to have with MEPA to make the final decision.
Thank you. Dan, back to you.
Yeah, so that's, you know, that was kind of really the bulk of what we wanted to discuss with the revision to the CWMP, also as a general discussion topic. If you guys want to jump into the sewer CAD model, we're happy to do that because I think it's going to take, take a little bit of time.
Hang on one second, Dan. Any questions from the board? Or go ahead, Joe.
And then, one other item related to the general topic of the comprehensive wastewater management plan is the DHY working group, as it was called, is scheduled to meet again Friday, June 18th, 9:00 AM, and I'm ready, willing, and able and prepared to attend that meeting, but also thought the board may want to just discuss that, given that it's coming up on Friday. I will say, at the outset, I think there have been many factors that have changed with that working group and the outlook on that. I don't know that we will necessarily, as three towns, come out the way that the discussion had been going over the past two years. But I do think that a check-in meeting after several months this Friday may be beneficial for all towns, but certainly beneficial for our town to at least be present to discuss.
Thank, thank you. And I, and my intention was not to change that team, which Larry and Don were on, on with yourself. So, I would say that a debriefing after all the town meetings is necessary. Larry, I know you're going to be away.
Yeah, I'm going to try, but I'm not sure. But I don't think it would be, there's going to be much of a sense of going on at that meeting. It's going to be an update because nothing's happened since town meeting, so.
Don, is your intention to go?
Yeah, I was just curious. Is it hybrid? Is it fully in-person?
Well, I, I think it was intention, intention to be remote, but I think the update from the Division of Urban Government changes that. So, it could be at Dennis Town Hall as it has in the past.
Perhaps you could check in on that.
Absolutely. As soon as we know, I'll spread that around.
But further to what Larry was saying, so that Mary knows what's going on, there's actually been no action taken by Dennis at all relative to an agreement. We didn't take any action. We haven't actually even put an article on town meeting. Yarmuth did some, but it-
Not directly related to that.
No, and it predicates, in order to adopt DHY, if that's the direction all the towns want to do, they have to adopt the exact same language in an article simultaneously. So, we couldn't opt to change certain things that they want. It has to be consistent language.
Thank you, Don. Joe, you'll get with Don and tell him where the meeting is?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we'll be reporting out next week as well.
Okay. Okay, with that, Dan, I'll go back to you.
Yeah, so, before I turn it over to Russ, just, I guess, a quick recap. I know we brought this up before, but really, what we're going over tonight is the initial pass at the pump station locations for the sewer CAD model. And these are really the base of the model, and once we're able to build out from this point, we'll be able to determine if there's any areas that we're missing coverage in things of that nature. So, Russ and I, last week, drove around to each one of these locations. We did cite a couple that did warrant some change. A lot of them did look like the best possible location. So, I guess with that, Russ, I'll turn it over to you, and we can get going.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Powers, for the record, my name is Russ Kleikamp, an engineer with the company GHD, and we're going to be talking about the initial pump station sighting for the town sewer CAD model that we're working on. So, a couple opening remarks. I'm going to be going through a lot of information, so if I'm going too quickly, or if I need to repeat myself, please let me know. And, you know, something that's important to be said right off the bat is that what we're showing tonight, and this is more for members of the public in attendance tonight or folks who may be watching this, as Harwich moves forward with its wastewater planning, it will have different options for implementation, and that's the basis of the discussion for the modifications to the comprehensive wastewater management plan. Ultimately, what we're presenting tonight is an option where we look to maximize the gravity sewer system, but that is just one of several options. I don't want the public or folks to think that what we're presenting tonight is the finite destiny for the town of Harwich, that this is what we're going to do. This is just the detailed beginning of one of several options moving forward for wastewater planning. Also, for members of the public, too, we're going to be showing the pump station sites and the locations tonight. Please don't panic if we show a figure with a pump station that may be next to your property or nearby. There's not going to be an excavator there in the morning, beginning pump station construction. This is very preliminary, early-on planning, but we have to start presenting this information publicly at some point. So, this is the first shot, so please don't be alarmed. If you see a pump station within the vicinity of your property, there's still a lot of items that have to be checked off the list before this moves into implementation, which is still, you know, likely years in the future. So, just to be cognizant of that. So, let me attempt to share my screen here.
Russ?
Hopefully, it, yes, sir.
If I could just stop you for one second. First and foremost, thank you for that disclaimer. I think that's extremely important. Does, Larry, would you like to give a brief overview of how we got to where we are now and why we're doing this? And for me, I'll just say it's not related, for the few that may watch or are watching, it's not related to DHY. This is for a collection system, and whether we go back to our own dump with it, or whether we go to DHY or Dennis Harwich-Yarmouth-Tritown, that, none of that's been decided yet, and as Russ said, this is for planning purposes. Larry, if you want to-
You catch me a little bit off guard, but it's, yes, for planning, we, you know, we've been working on East Harwich in our next phase. You know, we've been working on East Harwich in our next phase, partly driven by DHY, was to look at West Harwich. And as Michael says, we're not agreed on whether we're going with DHY or not, but we're still looking at possibility of searing as one of the options in West Harwich. And to do this, we had explored several possibility routes. Sewering across Route 28 was one option. We also then looked at what would be the advantages of searing more towards Harwich Center, since we're trying to revitalize Harwich Center. And it turns out, we could do that with about the same number of miles or feet of searing, if you will. But the issue is, is how we do that most efficiently in terms of location of the pumps to expand the gravity as much as we can. No one likes grinder pumps. And so, and then, these folks have been working on the, a lot of this discussion goes on what will the flow rates be? And the flows are dictated by zoning. We're always trying to react to what the town wants to do. And so this is the first, I think, just to emphasize for everyone saying, this is for planning. And these will most certainly change somewhat as we go forward, especially, I think, as we look at updating the local comprehensive plan, and possibly we look at some areas that we either want to change from our current zoning, either decrease or increase. So there's a lot of discussions going forward.
Thank you, Larry. Don, you want to expand on that at all?
Yeah. Because my initial thought was that we'd be also examining East Harwich, because the predication for the flow rates there were based on a build-out that was 41% higher than what we had. So what Larry's saying, if we don't pass any changes in zoning bylaws, then that may be codified in the CWMP as a flow rate that's exaggerated, that we're trying to actually sewer more than we should.
Mary, any questions at where we are so far?
As I look at this, this looks like it's all East Harwich. So this is not related to if we were to go DHY.
I'll go back to Russ.
Just to answer that question, so this is a town-wide sewer CAD model. It's, you'll see in a moment here when I share my screen, the areas that we're looking at and covering. And again, the reason why we're doing this model is for accurate planning purposes. The model results give you very good conceptual design information, which in turn gives you very good cost estimating information, which goes into your financial plan for your comprehensive wastewater management plan. So it is inclusive of the entire town. In the event that there is a DHY partnership, your pump station locations would likely be the same, but the routing of the force mains, which carries the raw wastewater to its destination, would likely change. But in a perfect world, if the solution for the three towns was a regional system, you would want to do a sewer CAD model of the entire region, not just each individual town, because it all plays together. And, you know, from a sewer standpoint, it's just one giant collection system divided by multiple town boundaries. So a model could be expanded to do the entire region if it gets to that point. But to answer that direct question, it does encompass the majority of the town.
Thank you.
Let me just make one, Michael, by my line, one more clarifying statement. Don mentioned the East Harwich, and that has an exaggerated, had an exaggerated full because we were looking at so-called smart growth at that at one time, based on planning that Sue Levin had a grant to look at Billy Center. The rest of the town was based on the current zoning, which much less than that. But the value that I see in this is, is that the intent of the relationship, if you will, with planning, zoning, and the CWMP is an iterative project. So we start off with what these kind folks are doing to give us a sewer flow and some idea of the expenses, and then we can circle that back around to see how that affects what we may want to grow and not grow, and we can run the model again. And so it gives us a way to actually look at, every time there's a factor on zoning and growth and what our vision will be, this is a start to end the model that around, see what are the implications, both to the expanse and to the, you know, building pump stations and stuff. So it's a critical step, and I applaud the work that they're starting on this.
Thank you. Back to you, Russ.
Thank you. So I'm going to attempt to share screens, and hopefully I don't exit out of the meeting by accident here. Okay, so screen. Okay. Let's pull up the model. So you should be able, does everybody see the Google Earth image with the entire town of Harwich?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so a couple more quick things, what you're looking at here. And I'm going to zoom into the pump station sites. So the parcel lines are from the assessor's database on Mass GIS. Those are the white lines. This reddish color along the coast, that's the area of high-risk coastal area. Pump stations located in that area just need to be raised above a certain elevation. That's where you get the intense wave action, where you have storms. And then the areas in green, those are your, what we call like the 100-year flood elevation. So again, pump stations that are located within the green and/or the orange area, they have to be designed with certain considerations in mind, just like the properties, buildings, things like that. You have to raise the access above the designed flood elevation. So that's what the colors are you're looking at. I did make the aerial photography, an image in the fall, so the foliage is down. It gets a little more clear when you zoom into the pump station sites. If you'd like to see a summertime image, we can put it up, and that more accurately represents, you know, today's, what's out there right now. And also, Google Earth has tons of layers. If you want me to turn on road names, things like that, there's all sorts of stuff I can turn on and off. But I thought for clarity purposes, I tried to keep it fairly simple. And hopefully, the index on the left-hand side of the screen, this PS-A-01, is in the same order of the figures in your packet. So I'm just going to go one by one to each one of the stations, and we'll start with So this is just the information that pops up on part of the parcels when we bring it into Google Earth. It is a privately owned parcel. So let me turn the roads on, so we get a better idea. So this is on Kildee Road, and I believe this is one of the subtle changes that we have already made. I believe the figure in your package shows the pump station in the corner of this slot here. But this is a developed parcel. We felt it was better locating it down on this parcel, which is off of Kildee Road. And I believe it's owned by the Harwich Conservation Trust. And if we go over to Google Street View, what you'll see is, like many of the sites, just an undeveloped, looks like a wooded parcel. The one thing I'll add with the pump stations, you know, gravity pump stations have to be at a point where the flow can flow to them. So, you know, by design, they're generally in low points, but, you know, what else is in low points is water, conservation, things like that. So there's going to be, yes.
Joe Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, Russ. Russ, I just want to let the board know, I met with Mark, Griffin, and Dan this morning. And so the change from their documents, I'm going to, it's not going to help the camera, but I'm going to show the board. You can see that that was the proposed location up here. What he's talking about is that parcel right there, which is 1300.
1300.
Yep.
And that 1300, don't do what I did and go out there and look for a house with 1300 on it for 20 minutes. That's the land use code. That is not an address.
And so, Russ, thank you for that, because I, could you very quickly just speak to that? Because the plan that we're looking at shows several 1010s. I think I know what that is, but I'm not going to guess. You've indicated 1300. So what the board is looking at on the plan pages, these are not parcel numbers, these are the assessor's designations, correct?
Correct. Those are land use codes. So if it starts with a 1, it's typically residential. If it starts with a 3, it's a commercial. I think if it starts with a 4, that's industrial. I want to say, I don't know if we have any of those in Harwich. But, um, yeah, anything that starts with a 1, I believe is like a residential land use code. There's a formal name for the designation, which I don't know off the top of my head, but it's a residential land use, I believe.
For the board's purposes, as an example, you can see the parcel that they're now talking about, the change on that page, 1300. And on either side of it is 1010. So 1010, that is typically single-family residents or residential. So you'll want to keep that in mind as you see these on the plans.
And what is 1300? Conservation?
I believe 1300 means it's open space conservation. Russ, is that fair?
Yeah, I don't have the exact titles right up in front of me, but I can get them and send them over to you for clarification. Or maybe, Mark, if you could look those up in the background while I'm doing this and send me a message, we can circle back to this. One thing I noticed, though, the color shading on the Google Earth, what you're looking at is green, and in your figures, it's blue. So I'm going to turn this green off on Google Earth, because you have that in your figures, and that might lead to some confusion. So for the purposes of the Google Earth, we'll just look at it as is, and you have the flood zones on the plans that you have in your packets.
Hang on one second.
Any other questions?
Yep, hang on one second. Don Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want a clarification, because, so as not to confuse people, if it's conservation land, there's two types. And I just want to reiterate, is it indeed held by the Conservation Trust, or is it joint tenancy with the town? Is town?
This one is not a, I apologize. This one is not a Harwich Conservation Trust. It's privately owned, from the assessor's information. Peterson is the last name of the party that owns it. So this is a privately owned, this is not, this is not owned by the Harwich Conservation Trust, nor is it a conservation parcel. Apologies. It's too many pump station sites, but it is a privately owned parcel.
And as a heads up, if you do say it in the future, I'm going to be interested in the same way, because all conservation land is not held by the same people.
I'm going to be sharing, click on the parcel before I say, who knows, who owns the site to make, to be 100% sure for the upcoming sites.
Okay, go ahead, Russ.
Any other questions regarding this site? Would you like to see it again on Google Earth, or shall we move on to the next one?
Just-
Mary?
Just one general question. When you say that's a privately owned parcel, would this pump station be in the land that is really owned by the town, you know, that buffer off the center lane? Or is it actually going to be on the person's property?
Great question. So if we look at this from the street view, let it just clear up here. There we go. Generally, you know, the town has a right-of-way road layout, you know, it's 40, 60, 80 feet, you know, you generally see a certain size. So the town owns, you know, usually five to 10 feet past the edge of the pavement. With this particular site, the pump station, and again, it depends on the type of pump station, too. There's multiple different types. The sewer CAD model doesn't get into the type of pump station. There are some sites where we can fit, we think we can fit it within the road right-of-way that's located in front of a private parcel. For this one, this site, the pump station, would be located within the limits of the private property. So an easement or a taking would be necessary to build a pump station at this site.
Okay, so that's going to vary site by site, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Russ.
Okay. So let me just exit street view, and we will go to the next site, which is PS-HR-01. Okay. So this site, it's off of Depot Road West. It's basically at the end, it looks like a paper road or a cul-de-sac here. It is within the town's right-of-way at the end of Nathan Henry Road. I don't know if street view is going to let us go down there. It's not, but Dan and I drove down there, we looked at it, we feel there is suitable area for a pump station. We'll just take a look at what the entrance of it is here. So it's an unpaved gravel road that comes down. There is some undeveloped land that falls within what we see on the assessor's map for citing the pump station, but it does look like a suitable location. And again, a lot of these pump stations, you know, we talk about the flows and all the sort, you know, even the whole town, it's not, in the world of sewers, it's not generating a ton of flow. These are not going to be big pump stations. I believe the town has built a couple already, and you can see the size of them. That's going to be a fairly accurate representation of what the pump station, you know, if it's an above-grade pump station, you know, the size of the building. Some might be a little bit bigger if you have generators, things like that. But there's also styles of pump stations that are submersible, that all you see is a vent, a wet well hatch, and, you know, minimal infrastructure above grade as well. So we do have some flexibility on the type and style of pump station, depending on what the flows are and what the site constraints are as well. So the site here, we feel that there's suitable land to get the pump station in. Questions?
Russ, just backtrack, that is town-owned property?
According to the assessor's information, it is. You know, as this searing moves forward, and we pick final pump stations, we do a more detailed property search, because sometimes you see, you know, these parcel lines here that shows like this paper road that indicates a cul-de-sac, but there's clearly a paved driveway going right through the middle of it. So we always, you know, we want to do the research to make sure the exact property owners when it comes to more in the design phase. But as, all the information we have right now, it's showing that it is located within town-owned property.
Thank you, Russ.
And this is located off Belmont Road. It's another similar, we have like a, it looks like a paper road coming in here that is not developed, it's actually Wishing Well Street. I think there is a little sign there. But the pump station, so before I just jump to street view, so we show, you know, we're showing this pump station all the way back here in the parcel. I mean, for the model, it has to be in this general area. If we wanted to slide it up here, you know, if we wanted to move it, it's not finite to this exact point. We do have some flexibility within that parcel. So if there's room closer to the street, that's better. You know, when it comes to final design, that's where we'll move it. So don't, don't get caught up thinking that this is the exact pinpoint where the pump station is going. We do have flexibility. So let's take a look at street view. Again, just an unpaved road, looks like it leads down to access to a few residential And, you know, wherever we, you know, if it comes to the time when we do put a pump station down here, obviously, we're going to look to make it as least noticeable as possible, so we'd pick a suitable location within that area for it. Questions?
I'll set.
Russ, while you're fine to the next one, this is Griffin. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind me just chiming in quick.
Go ahead, Griffin.
So I think, you know, as you mentioned, the pump stations that have been installed as part of the first phase or Phase 2 here, you know, those stations were about 12 by 14 feet, you know, and now that they've been constructed, the landscaping has been installed around most of those, you know, they look, they've taken on a different look than they may have looked like when they were first installed. You know, so not only with the, you know, the architecture of the building, but also, you know, with screening and vegetation, you can sort of make them blend in. And I think over time, they'll be, they'll continue to blend in even more. But, you know, as the folks maybe saw them under construction and haven't seen them since then, you know, if you drive by now, they're starting to fit in a little bit more nicely with the landscape than maybe they were when it was just a cleared area. Just something I wanted to point out.
Thank you, Griffin. Question for you, Griffin, Mary?
Griffin, could you give us a couple of addresses? I'd like to just drive by and see one.
There's two on Church Street. One is right next to, I believe it's number 24 Church Street. It's sort of the lower end of Church Street, closer to the Chatham Line. As you continue up Church Street, you know, towards East Harwich, there's one on the right side. I think that's near like 113 Church Street.
Great.
There's also one on, those were the two that RJV constructed. The ones that RBO constructed look very similar. One of those is on Route 137, right across from, I guess, the southern entrance to Sherwood Drive, I believe it is. And then the other one is tucked a little bit ways down off Route 39 off of Spencer's Trace.
Thank you, Griffin. Joe Powers?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And not to invite the board to Dan's house, but I would invite the board to Dan's house, and that is the pump houses, and that's the ones that Griffin talked about. Griffin had me down there a few weeks ago. He and Dan were working on landscaping. I highly recommend that the board reach out to staff to get a tour of those, because first of all, you want to see them inside and outside before they're in operation. They're not the best places to be after, even though we have ODA controls and all that. But to just see what's in there right now and what the money purchased, it was remarkable for me to be able to check it out. I highly recommend that you not only do a drive-by, but if you have a chance to actually go inside and have staff walk you around. It's remarkable engineering.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Dan.
We'll go back to Russ.
And I totally forgot, I had a bunch of images of pump stations that we worked on, some obvious, some not obvious, all different forms. If the board would like to see them at the conclusion of this, I'd be happy to, happy to show them. So our next pump station site is HR-03. This is right off Route 28. Let me just zoom out a little bit to get my bearings. It's not the Swan, is it the Swan or Herring River? Yeah, located by the Herring River. So it's by this park and there's a boat ramp here. And this is one where I think we're looking at putting it close to the Center Island. You know, as an outdoorsman and fisherman, I'm very cognizant when people go messing with boat ramps. I can't stand it. So I understand that boats come in here, they need to turn around, they have maneuvering with the trailer, they have to be able to back in. So all those considerations will be taken under when we do this design to make sure that we can still incorporate the use of this parcel. If we want to take a look at it on street view. Spin us around. Here is the parcel. So we were looking, let me just go up just a little bit more. No, you can't really see, but usually in this area, we have the water main with the hydrant, we may need to relocate a hydrant, but we'd look to put the pump station out of the way of the maneuvering vehicles and utilize the existing island here as much as possible. We'll have to check the widths of the layout with DOT, things like that, but it's a fairly open site and if needed, we felt it was suitable for a pump station. Questions?
All set.
This was one of the sites in the original, a few months back, we did the small SewerCAD evaluation of downtown Harwich, or the central Harwich area. And this was one of the pump station sites that we identified through that process. This is in, you know, the public garden area. This will likely be a larger pump station because it's in a centralized location and other pump stations will tie to it. When I say larger pump station, larger within respect to the other pump stations in the town of Harwich, Harwich is still going to be a small station. I mean, just the town itself does not generate an overwhelming amount of flow in the world of sewer. So it will be a larger station for the town of Harwich, but not necessarily a very big And this is just the view from street view. So somewhere in a inconspicuous area. Again, we know there's a shared use on this property, gardens, people, access, all those sort of things. So when it does come time for a design, if the site's selected, again, we make sure that we try to minimize impact to the public as much as possible in the existing use of that property. Questions?
All set, thank you, Russ.
So this one's located on the corner of Pleasant Lake Ave and Roseway. This is a privately owned, private parcel, undeveloped. That has a land use code here. No, I'm sorry, that's the parcel. So I believe this is, okay, that's the 9500. I just, I got the plan up in front of me. So I think your package, the board's package, has the pump station shown in this parcel right here. And this is a town-owned parcel. So likely what we're going to do is move the pump station from this, which is a privately owned, up to this parcel right here. And this is just one of the subtle changes that we talk about with the sewer, with the SewerCAD model, why we go out and drive to look at all these. So I'm going to make a note of it here to move PS-HR-05 off of the privately owned parcel and ideally look to cite it on the town, town-owned parcel.
Russ, just quickly, that would go to from 9500 to 9300, correct?
Correct, 9300.
Thank you.
And we run into this, like with a lot of other towns, you know, a lot of the pump station sites are on conservation parcels, but, you know, if you think of why we are searing, it's conservation, you know, it's a conservation project. We're trying to protect water bodies, waterways, things like that. So generally, we can work with the conservation department and the agent to come up with a suitable design that meets the needs of the town. Okay, so pump station HR-06.
Russ, just to add on to that, I think, you know, sometimes with, and Don, you might have been bringing this up before, sometimes with conservation-owned land, you know, it can require an Article 97 legislation in order to allow it to be used for that purpose. But as long as we get ahead of that early enough in the design process, then that, that wouldn't slow things down. That can take some time, but once you go through the process, then, then you typically can be allowed to do something like that.
Thank you, Griffin.
Pump station HR-06, there, this is Oak Street. All these parcels here are undeveloped. I just clicked on a few and it appears that they are owned by, so this parcel here is owned by Conservation, town-owned parcel within Conservation. And then these other two parcels look like they're owned by the Gulf, Town of Harwich, the Gulf, I don't know if it's Department or Buildings and Grounds or whatever it may be, but it's, they're all town-owned, there's ample land here that's undeveloped. So I'm sure we could cite a pump station somewhere within this vicinity. Then go on to HR-07, if there's no questions. So this site here is in a residential area. It is a town-owned parcel. No, it's right next to a water body, so there's conservation, things like that, you know, notice of intent in the permits. But again, it's at the low point, it would collect the sewage from these properties here. So it looks like a good site for a station.
We talked about how that project could improve the drainage from that neighborhood dumping off into the back of that pond as well.
We did, we did notice, yeah, we did, as, you know, I noticed evidence of stormwater runoff that's going into some of the wetlands, water bodies, things like that. So obviously, if we're going to go out and do sewer, you know, we want to address, that would bring into compliance, I believe, with your MS4 permit. So we look to be as economical as possible, you know, combine, you know, try to get the most bang for the buck when we're doing that. So we did, we're not just solely looking at pump stations, you know, if we see other things that need to be addressed, we take, take note of that.
Thank you.
Pump station HR-08. Dan, this one wasn't already built, was it?
No.
I think that's, no, okay, yeah, the one that sits further up the street there. Okay, so this one is located at the intersection of Route 124 and Queen Anne Road. Let me just go down to street view. Ideally, this is the low point right here, so it is part of a, I'm sure this is a privately owned parcel. But you can see it's undeveloped, but going back to the previous question, you can see by the parcel lines here that there is a fairly wide road layout here. So if there's any possibility of sneaking the pump station within the right-of-way, you know, obviously, that's going to be our first thing that we're going to look at. If for some reason we can't, then we'd cut out a temporary easement, a construction easement for construction and then go for a permanent easement or taking after the fact. But absolutely would look to put this in the road shoulder if we could fit it in there safely.
Thank you, Russ. Questions, any questions?
Nope.
All set, thanks, Russ.
I do, I do assume that's always your first choice just because it's so much easier.
Correct. Ideally, if we have a town-owned parcel that is not within a flood zone or conservation, it is a standout parcel, but typically those are at high elevations. And as soon as I figure out how to make water flow uphill, we're going to go to those sites. But for the time being, we're stuck with a lot of these low-lying elevations. I did make a note here, though, that across the street, this parcel is private and it's much larger and looks like not much of a difference. So for some reason, this property owner, it doesn't work out, we have this parcel on the other side of the street, too. So we have both, both sides there. Okay.
Thank you.
Pump station, pump station HR-08. Look at that, was it already? Okay, pump station HR-09. Okay, so this is just further down on Route 124, undeveloped parcel. This one is owned by the Harwich Conservation Trust. And I'm sure everybody's driven this road numerous times and it's just, you know, somewhere within this vicinity, either on the road shoulder or within this parcel, we would look to construct the pump station. There's your Harwich Conservation Trust sign right there. This site here, located at the end of Baker's Drive. We drove this one, this would be, you know, this pump station site down here would collect the flow from the residential properties upgrading of it. Let's see if we can get down there on street view. So we do have some room on the corner here. You know, we've talked about putting pump stations in the central turnaround of a cul-de-sac, but that is a super highly visible area, so you just have to be aware of that. Kind of one of those like last resort things, if you can't find any other place, then you look at the center of the cul-de-sac. Let me just take a look and see who owns, yeah, these are all privately owned parcels here. So again, we have a fairly wide road layout. If we can fit something on the road shoulder, great. If we can't, we'd have to look to take a small easement at a corner of one of these Questions?
All set, Russ.
Okay, pump station HR-11. So this one, I believe this was the one on Great Western Road. Yep. This one might be a little more challenging just because it is a privately owned parcel and the low point of the road is really kind of right in this area. So with the pump stations, you know, you generally want to get them at the lowest point. You can put them a little higher up, but that drives the excavation of your sewers deeper. So this one, we would want to, you know, pinpoint the finite location. I don't know if you can see it on your screen, but in the bottom right corner, this little elevation icon, you can see that in Google Earth. If you follow it, it goes from 15 feet down to about 10, 8, 7, 6, down in this area here is our low point. And you can just, you know, see by out there, it looks like wetland, low-lying kind of swampy areas. So we'd look to put a pump station somewhere in this corner, but it would require land clearing, it's going to be right next to a house. So it might be a little challenging, but again, if this site turns out to be one of the more critical locations to make the gravity option work, in the event the town goes with that option, it might be a site that we don't have an option, that we just have to pursue that. You can see it's a fair amount of residential to the east and west of it. So again, we'll, we'll use it for now to model it, to see what the flow is, how much, how many properties truly are connected to it. But that one might be a little more on the challenging side. But again, it's, we've run into this before and just may take a little more time to work it out with the property owner easements, things like that.
And Russ, this, this might be one that becomes part of a little, a little bit more of an iterative process where once they build, once GHD builds the model, we'll have a better feel for, you know, what's tributary to this area, what size does it really need to be? And then based on that, we could figure out, okay, what, what alternative locations may we have, what alternative potential technology could we, could we implement here in those elements? So you're kind of running down sort of your checkboxes and, you know, when they don't work out ideally, then you got to sort of go back to the drawing board and reevaluate a little bit just to make sure that we're, we've exhausted all the possible options that, that may work for any particular area.
Absolutely. Great points. And I was just kind of, while Griffin was talking, you know, the land, all of this is hard, on the other side of the road is Harwich Conservation Trust, but you can see, you know, it's one thing to put a pump station in a conservation area, but when you see standing water and things like that, you generally want to shy away from it if possible. So if we move a little ways up the road, there might be some, some land up here. So a little more challenging on a site, but an iterative process. And again, once we get the model built, we'll see truly how important this area is for the overall town. Potentially could be an area for low pressure or some other technology if we can't get the pump station cited. So we do have some options. HR-12, not too far away. This is on Main Street. It's an undeveloped parcel. So it would be in this parcel, let me just back up a little bit here. So this parcel here on your left, you know, would have to be cleared, but there's land there, clear for the pump station, not the entire parcel. So there is land there, feel like it's a good site if needed. Okay, let's go out of this. That was 12. We're on to, going, I'm moving on to HR-13. So this one is located at the intersection, Dan, help me out, which two roads are these? Google Earth is not cooperating with the road labels. Queen Anne Road?
I think it's Main Street and Queen Anne Road.
Main Street and Queen Anne Road. So it's a privately owned parcel, but it is undeveloped. Look at it from this direction here. But you can see it's a fairly open site. Looks suitable for a pump station if needed. Going on to HR-14. So this is located off of Depot Street and I think it's Francis Road. Undeveloped parcel, or I shouldn't say undeveloped, it's a privately owned parcel, looks like a decent-sized parcel with a residential dwelling on it. So this would just have to be located in the back end of the parcel or again, within the road layout, if we can fit it in to the areas here, somewhere on the road shoulder. Let's see if street view is available. So I could tell this neighborhood, they have undergrounds, you can see that right there as underground electric, so we have some underground utilities we'd have to look at. But this almost looks like a perfect little knockout here to put a small cedar shingle building, something that would fit right in if we needed to in this area. But we got room, maybe not on this side of the parcel, so this looks like the optimal location for this neighborhood. So this one's located at the intersection of Great Western Road and Depot Street and Dan and I got out here and kind of looked around. I know there's a lot of gas infrastructure that was recently constructed here, so we want to stay away from this corner. This corner looked a little tight, so we said, you know what, if it's, if we need a pump station here, it's going to have to go across the street. It's a wide-open parcel, looks like it's used for either boat storage, privately owned. Very busy road, so this one I would think would want the pump station set off, off the road. That way, when the town's vehicles are pulling in to service it, you know, you have plenty of room to pull in for parking. Again, those are little fine details you think about when you're designing a pump station is if you put it right next to the road, you know, is it going to, you're not creating a safety issue for travelers on the road and town staff when they're getting in, getting out of the vehicles. You want to make sure that they have room to maneuver the trucks, deliver equipment, chemicals, you know, whatever it may be, that there's going to be a need for safe movement around the area. So across the street just looked like a much safer, better location. Just take a look at the street view. So you can see it's just a, you know, wide open area, hopefully suitable for pump station site. I shouldn't say hopefully, I should, hopefully the owner is agreeable and if it works out, it makes a good site. Okay, pump station PB-01.
Russ, I think it's these next handful that are, at least this one is already built.
Okay.
Let me just trace here.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Spencer's Grace. Some of those, Russ, just, just for the, for the board and for the public, you know, some of the, the prefixes on these, these labels for the pump stations has to do with the watershed that they're in. So the HR ones were the Herring River watershed, this is PB, this is Pleasant Bay. I think I'm correct there, right?
Yep. So we're going to go to 02?
This one, Russ, was also eliminated 02.
Okay. 04. That's right.
That is. Yeah.
That's, yep, okay.
This is the lower Church Street one, Mary, that you had asked about earlier, this, you know, off of Church Street, closer to the Chatham line.
Thank you.
And then, Dan, I think PB-05, was that one also constructed? Yep. That's, yeah, 113, yeah, yep, that's the one. Yep.
That's the 113 Church Street location. The next one's not.
Okay. So PB-06, Pleasant Bay 06.
That makes those easy.
Wish they were all that easy. So this one here, I think we, we drove down, Dan and I looked at this.
Yeah, this was originally in contract three of phase two.
Dan, just clarify, that was originally in as a picked site?
Yes, this was a selected site. I don't know if they had to do land taking for it. I know they were planning on citing the island, the pump station right at the island here, kind of bordering between the two properties that are within the island. This was one of the sites that was proposed not to have a generator. I think there was concern over the land taking or potential to have to take land there, which I think, you know, we should reconsider putting a generator there, but.
Dan, can you get us, get the board for the next time we discuss this, to back up on that, what happened in the past?
Yep.
So this is a, a good site though, just to, not to drag this out too much further. So there's talk about, you know, we're, we're doing this for 100% gravity coverage, right? So if we put a pump station down there, it's likely going to capture all these homes. But at some point, there's a trade off if you can only get so many properties where you look at putting low pressure in instead of the pump station. And I want to say it, we, I did a financial analysis on it years ago, it was around 15 or 18 parcels, but if for some reason you couldn't get this land use or it wouldn't work out, you know, this neighborhood would have to be all low pressure. And again, like everything, there's pros and cons with everything. I know the statement was made earlier that low pressure, you know, we don't like it and true, yeah, it does require homeowners to be more cognizant, they have mechanical parts that are moving, it's not a gravity lateral. But from an operator's side of it, low pressure means that you don't have rags and other things that clog your pumps coming in because it gets macerated at the grinder pump, so it reduces the amount of pump shutdown from a rag entanglement. And you also don't have any inflow and infiltration, INI, which is a major battle with every gravity sewer system that all the towns have, mostly because they're older systems and they're leaking water. And what INI is, that's the clean water, groundwater, rainwater that gets into sewer systems and it gets to your plant and you end up paying to treat clean water, which is crazy. So you try to minimize INI. So some towns have actually said, you know what, in areas of high groundwater, we're saying it's grinder pump only. But again, it's, it's, we give you the information, we work with you to make the decisions. These are all pros and cons of systems, technologies, directions that we go. But this is a, you know, a small neighborhood and for some reason we couldn't get the, the gravity pump station here. It would either be a low pressure or potentially another, another technology. So. Okay, pump station PB-07. This is, I had a note here saying to move this. Okay, so we had originally, I believe in your package, we showed the pump station on this private parcel here. And I want to say that we moved it to, oh, Water Department property. So hopefully the owner of that isn't too much of a stickler and he lets us put a pump station on it. So this, you know, this area here would look to put the pump station and hopefully not irritate the owner too much. PB-08. So this was an interesting one. And this way it pays, it pays off to drive to all these sites when you're planning because we had originally shown the pump station down in this part of the cul-de-sac, but if you drive down there, it's pretty obvious that you're not going to be able to construct a pump station down there. It's a plain view in front of someone's house, it's just that, that the logistics are just not there for a pump station. But further up this road, this Brothers Lane, it's a fairly, it's a gravel road, it's unimproved, it's very, it's going to spill your cup of coffee when you drive down it, let's put it that way. But there is room there on that right away where you could build a pump station. So Dan and I talked about moving this location up within this lane, Brothers Lane area somewhere here if needed, so we felt this was a better, better location for it. You know, again, as part of the, the sewer project, if we want to look to improve that road, level it, grade it, pave it, maybe the residents don't want it. I've run into this before, residents don't want roads paved because all of a sudden it invites access and vehicles driving too quickly, things like that. But at the very least, you know, we could fill in some of the potholes and make it drivable and things like that to provide some benefit to the residents in the area. Moving on to Pleasant Bay 09. This one here is located, is, we are showing it within this residential property here, but there's a decent amount of vegetation there, which can hopefully provide as a buffer or a block if we need to cite the pump station. Let me just move back to a better angle here. So the pump station would be somewhere within this, this vicinity here if we needed it on the edge of the road. Do you see my, do you see my cursor when I'm, I'm moving it around? I'm not seeing, okay, good. Questions?
All set, Russ.
Pleasant Bay 10. This one here is located. This is an association owned parcel, the Standish Woods Homeowners Association, looks like it owns this parcel. Again, just another small neighborhood at the end of a cul-de-sac, undeveloped parcel. So it kind of stands out if we need a pump station, this is likely where we'd want to put it. And you can see that it's just a vegetated area. Again, low point, I can, I bet these two catch basins have an outfall pipe that goes somewhere, so if there's an opportunity to do drainage improvements and help out the town, get in compliance with our MS4 requirements, you know, we could look to do that at the same time as well.
That's, Russ, that's the type of location where, you know, maybe the trade off for the Standish Woods folks is, you know, a pump station can go on this parcel and maybe a kayak rack could be born next to it or something like that, if, if that area is used for navigating through the waters. But those are some of the things that you can think about in terms of making trade offs with people in the future.
Absolutely, and I'm willing to bet those two catch basins strain directly out to this water body back here. So yeah, absolutely, if you can do a shared use, you know, whether it's a bench, observation deck, kayak launch, canoe launch, things like that, you know, a nice path, you know, options are, are many. So PB-11. This one is located at the intersection of Pleasant Bay Road and Round Cove Road. This one, it is located within a town layout, it's a, you know, a triangle at a, at two intersecting roads. Just take a quick look at it here.
This is one, Russ, that I believe is moved in their packet. It was shown on a privately held piece of land before we moved up to that corner.
You're right, I'm looking at that here, correct, yes. So what you're looking at in your package for PB-11, that got moved to this town owned parcel, this is right at the intersection of, yeah, Round Cove. Round Cove Road, right, right in this area here. Pleasant Bay, thank you. And I'm just looking, I, I think on your, in your package, we showed the pump station more down in this area, so it got moved up to, to here. And that was PB-11. PB-12, no, I don't see PB-12 in your package. Dan, did we, what happened to this one? Apologies, it seems that we have.
That's the one that's already built. That's, that's, that's right across from Sherwood. So it was purposely not in the package.
I'll save my apologies for something else then. PS, okay, S-01. All right, so this one here. This one here is located off of Route 28, right at the entrance of Marina here. So again, it's a privately owned, I believe it's a privately owned parcel, would just have to work with the owners. Oh, municipal Marina, so.
Town owned.
Town owned. And funny, you know, down in the town of Mattapoiset, those are some of the pictures, they have a couple pump stations that are located right at the boatyards and they're designed to fit the styling of around it and, you know, they look quite nice, you wouldn't it, if it wasn't for the red alarm on the outside, you'd never even know it's a pump station. So again, for the modeling purposes, we're going to show it here, but when it comes for the design, we'd pick at the, the, the least impactful area. We have a large parcel here we're working with, so there's, there's good land use here for a pump station.
And at this particular location, that, that fenced in area that they just showed there, because of the type of system, septic system that was installed there, there's a number of components that are exterior within that fenced area. So in the, you know, if, if a station was built here, that fenced area that holds those components right now could be, could be opened up again and replaced with the pump station, so to speak.
I'm going to go back to street view, Griffin, I want to just take a look.
Right around the others, yep. Keep going, right on the right side of the driveway, yep, right there. Yep. This, this was, it's, it's a, you know, it's an alternative treatment system that was in there, so there's, I, I don't know exactly what the instrumentology that's in there, but there's a number of things in there and, you know, in the future, you know, if, if a pump station were to go here, that stuff likely wouldn't be needed, you know, so it could be replaced.
Yeah, right, right. Good point, thank you. Okay. PS-S-02. Oh, Google Earth just crashed, sorry about that. Now I'm going to use my apologies for Google Earth crashing. Yeah, it would take some minute here to load up. I think I have half a Cape Cod's infrastructure loaded in on a KMZ files.
While, while we're waiting for this to pop back up, you know, I think, you know, we're talking about quite some detail about the pump stations. You know, we talked a little bit about the CWMP and the modeling and, you know, all, all these things will dovetail together and, and they are. But, you know, where you are trying to attack this sequentially, you know, we need to figure out the modeling before we figure out exactly how the CWMP will change. So, you know, we're trying to do it concurrently, but also make sure we're doing it in a logical manner where, you know, we're not getting out too far ahead of ourselves and having to cause ourselves rework in the, in the future.
So my index is not, oh wait, let me just open that up. There we go. And of course, they're not in order. Okay, we only have a few more to go, so I think we were looking at S-02?
S, yes.
Let me just turn the parcels on. Okay.
Russ, this is one that we moved from their packet as well.
Yep. I think our original location was somewhere there. Yeah, somewhere up on the corner and we looked to move it, move it down the end of the cul-de-sac. So again, residential neighborhood. That's interesting. I don't know why that's blurred there, but you can see it's an undeveloped parcel out here. So again, just a little point at the end of the residential neighborhood.
Russ?
Yes.
Privately owned or is it town owned?
Believe that within, let's see here. So within the, the parcel line, that is town owned and we have a fair amount of room. This parcel next to it is privately owned. So again, one of those situations, if we can fit it safely within the, the town's layout, absolutely. If not, would have to do an easement or taking.
Thank you.
Okay, so pump station S-03. And by the way, what I'm doing on Google Earth, all this information is just a KMZ file, I sent it to Dan, he has it. At some point, you know, we can discuss if, if it ever wanted to be made available on the town's website, once we get finalized things. I mean, it's just a, a wealth of information at your fingertips, so it's a very, very useful tool to have in your arsenal here. So PSS-03. Again, it's a large property here, it is.
Water Department.
Water Department. Again, that same Tusky Water Department owner that we have to deal with. So hopefully we can put the pump station in there. So this is Ridgeport Drive and we're looking at this undeveloped parcel here, which is owned by the, the Homeowners Association. But I'm guessing like in a lot of cul-de-sacs, they usually set a parcel aside for drainage, you know, drainage easement, things like that, it is in the low point. So we would look to utilize this undeveloped parcel, it's kind of a unique shape to it. But I have a feeling it's probably used for the areas for the, for the drainage, so hopefully it wouldn't be that difficult to get a pump station site there. Let me just back up a little bit to get a better view. Yeah, you can see just by the ponding, ponding water that it is a low point here, so just a vegetated area.
Russ, I think you're right, it was either drainage or open space, because I think there's an open space or drainage area on the other side too. So I think between, between the two sides, we'd be able to find something.
Right, right, one or the other. Good point. Pump Station SL-01. This is located at Queen Anne Road on Wales Road. A small undeveloped parcel, this is owned by the Harwich Conservation Trust. Let's take a look at it if we can here. Looks like we actually have three parcels that are all undeveloped here. So, yep, just another wooded parcel. And that is actually the last one, I think I have. And that is actually the last one I think I have. Dan, there's no others in the package, right? Is that the last site that you have?
That's the last one I got.
All right, very good. So that concludes, let me stop sharing here unless. Options, where is? You would think after a year and a half of doing these meetings, I'd figure out how to stop sharing the screen.
Hardly, it's different for every different platform.
I am, uh.
Russ, if you look at where the icons are, there we go.
All right, so that really, you know, concludes the, the, the virtual site visit of all the pump station sites. Again, this is for, more for, you know, transparency and to show how this process works, how we pick the sites. We did put eyes on them, made the subtle moves. The next step now, provided that there's no comments from the board that changes these sites, is that we will extend the, the gravity sewer, sewers from these pump station sites. And that will dictate the zones of coverage that we get. Once we have those zones determined, there will, there will be voids and gaps. And at that point, we have to make a decision if we look to put another pump station within those voids and gaps, if there's even room available. Or if it's, we have to do Plan B for those sites, whether it's low pressure, innovative, you know, whatever it may be. So this is the first step. Probably the next meeting or the next time you'll see this is when we get the gravity systems laid out and then we'll go over with the board where you're lacking coverage. And, you know, we can have a discussion on, on where we go from there. If you'd like to do low pressure, gravity, pick other pump station sites. But let us do some work and, and we're eager to report back to you. Any questions?
Thank you, Russ. I'm going to open it up to the board for comments or questions. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since he kind of obliquely quoted me about those grinder pumps. My major concern is the initial assumption before I even arrived back for the second tour of duty was that we have already decided that we are going to do a compound system where essentially everybody's paying for everybody, for everybody's face. It's a betterment that actually compounds through the years. There's not enough time for the first borrowing to dip off so that other borrowings don't wind up kind of staircaseing upwards in what we owe. My concern about the grinder pumps was you're really asking an awful lot of some homeowners. I'm not saying that we can't, that we may not have to do some grinder pumps, but the assumption that, well, you can take a hit for the town because you have to buy your own grinder pump, you have to buy your own backup generator, maintain them, and if anything happens to either of them, then you have to replace them. That inevitably is going to have something to do with the value of their house down the road. I mean, and I don't know that it's particularly fair that some people, because of where their house is located, wind up doing, having to do both, especially if they're in the earlier phases. They have to pay for grinder pump, have to pay for a generator, pay for the borrowing in that area, and then they move on to the next phase and they have to pick up that borrowing also. That's an awful lot to ask of some people. And I just want to make sure that if we do wind up having to do some hybrids or even IA systems, that we're cognizant of trying to make sure that this is equitably distributed. It's not just that some people have the misfortune of living where they live.
Mary?
No, impressive outlay of the town. I appreciate what you've put into it.
Larry?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That, that was very good. Given some discussion that Don brought up, I assume the next, when you're looking at the, there'll be some financial analyses versus the pumps and what would happen if we had to go to grinder pumps. And I, Don, to your point, we, we did explore this some years back. I, I forget whether it's collaborative or so on. Think of some towns have, when they've had used grinder pumps, they've, they've asked the town to pay for the grinder pumps, the generator, and then they ask the residents to pick up the maintenance. And so the initial cost has been covered, but they're still. But then there's the feeling, the feeling was it's good to have the resident pay for maintenance because that gives them an interest and be sure it's taken care of. But nevertheless, it would be a burden. But I, I think that's something that we, we didn't do as well as we could have in the phase we're doing now in East Harwich. We did all gravity. It went very deep and maybe closer financial analysis. Maybe there are a few homes that we should have done grinder pump. So I'm interested to be sure we have that financial analysis.
Thank you.
Just one other, one other question. Some of the sites you've, at least on the, on the drawing, is, you know, there's not, it's not precise Google Maps, but some of those appear to get fairly close to wetlands. What's that do with Conservation Commission? Griffin, we have to ask for, and Dan, a waiver on that or what's the, how does that proceed?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Go ahead.
Like we did with the ones in East Harwich, if I'm not mistaken, Griff, I think you did participate. We had to go through site plan reviews and, and go through conservation.
I, yeah, I don't, I know we had to go through ZBA because of the takings. I don't know that they had to go through conservation. I mean, I think i- if we are within buffers to the natural resource, whatever the natural resource zone may be, it would just, it would kind of be a standard filing with the Conserva- Conservation Commission. I mean, we're not proposing big parking lots associated with, with these. You know, it'd really be just be controlling the drainage from whatever would run off the roof and not, so maybe you have to do a little bit of enhanced drainage, but. I'm getting a little feedback.
No, those are, those are good points, Griffin. No, I'm good.
Joe Powers, anything? Nope, nothing from the town administrator. I'll open it up to anyone from the public that wanted to make a comment. Hearing nobody. Great presentation. Russ, I, I think that you guys have already demonstrated where you can move things after originally laid out is great. And I think that there's, you know, given that list, there's some that would obviously impact residences. So as much as we can steer away from those, the, the better. And then I would just ask the next presentation that, that we do, if we could bring back photographs and, and addresses of current pump stations, the four that we've built, and maybe even include the, the main pump station that connects us to Chatham, and then photographs of proposed pump stations. So I know we have one submersible, I believe, Dan, and, and the rest are one below ground and the rest are above ground. But as much as we can show people what these actually look like finished and can look like finished, I think would be a great benefit to the people that will be affected by these. But, but great, great presentation and thank you all very much.
Thank you, no, thank you very much.
All right, Joe, moving on to the next agenda item, which is the memo that you included in the packet to Ms. Goldsmith, the town administrator in Chatham, or town manager in Chatham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to you members of the board. You have in your packet, your original materials, the current IMA intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Chatham and Harwich. As you may recall from earlier meetings, at the time Chairman Ballantyne, myself, wastewater superintendent Dan Palatier, met with our counterparts in Chatham back in March for the Chatham-Harwich intermunicipal working group. It's an effort that we're looking to do on a regular basis. At that time, our wastewater superintendent had brought up the fact that based on the existing language, which you can see in your packet in the IMA document, page four, section three, capacity purchase fee. Through the fluke of timing of impacts of pandemic, work being done and several other things, the town of Harwich was staring down a $3 million payment in fiscal year 22, and that was never the intent of the parties. So we had a discussion at that working group meeting. Manager Goldsmith and Dr. Dunkinson seemed fairly agreeable and understood where the town of Harwich was coming from in our request. So what you have in front of you is a letter written on my behalf by our wastewater superintendent, that if the board approves it, would be sent by me to my counterpart in Chatham, codifying our request that they push out the, the last two payment purchase items, which are, as you'll see in the letter, going from a five year to a seven year mark. So where you can see in the table in the letter, seven years or 50,000 gallons per day, that payment of 1.5 million would be pushed out from March 2022 to March 2024. And the seven year mark now becomes the nine year mark or 150,000 gallons per day. Again, a payment of 1.5 million pushed out from March 2024 to March 2026. So the net result of that is where we have commencement of flow looking to occur in fiscal year 22, we have already made arrangements and have budgeted the 1.5 million. We did not anticipate the other. So the request this evening of the board is for you to agree to the concept of what's being asked and agree to the letter and the mechanism by which that would be sent.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone, Dan, do you have any comments on this or Griffin?
Sorry, having a hard time getting my mic. No, I think you'll come to it as well.
Great. Comments or a motion from the board?
I move that we accept the concept and approve the letter to be sent by our town administrator to manager Goldsmith.
Second.
Great. All right, no discussion?
No.
Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
Thank you for Joe and Dan for going through this aspect.
Thank you. And the, I will turn it over to town administrators report.
Mr. Chairman, we didn't have that on the agenda, so I didn't prepare one. Certainly take advantage of that tomorrow evening.
Sounds great. Selectmen's report, Don?
Same.
That is on the agenda tonight, but you can save it.
I'm deferring until tomorrow. I'm not going to have much more new news by tomorrow.
I'm all set.
Larry?
Just a brief comment. I was driving through Harwich Center on Saturday, just a little after nine, and was stopped by a police procession of about twenty. I got to, I counted, I think up to about sixteen and I lost count. Impressive, caught me by surprise. And I learned later in the day, they were making sure spatial Olympics at Monterey of all the policemen on Cape Cod. So it was very impressive. No sirens, so we didn't violate Mike Wayne, no he's bylaws.
Thank you.
It was a very impressive procession.
Deputy Chief Constan is a big force on that, if you'll pardon the expression, and very impressive display.
Very, yeah.
Excellent. My only comment is tomorrow night, we have our regular meeting. It is at 6:30 here in the Griffin Room. People can go, access via go to meeting because that was the original link. But based on information given by the town administrator tonight, the room will be open to the public. And that's it with that.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Moved and seconded to adjourn, roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I am an aye.